...of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Perry, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Carol, please call the roll.
Mr. Spielvogel?
Here.
Mr. Rudler?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here. Thank you. I'm going to note a couple of different things here. Number one is that we are currently being recorded. Everybody in this room is being recorded either through the county specifically, to broadcast on our livestream, through the county, through this microphone, transcribing the minutes, through Angelo, to broadcast to NCTV-45, and also, obviously, notes are being taken by the Elwood City Ledger and the Newcastle News. I'm also going to ask, just in this current condition that we find ourselves relating to the coronavirus pandemic, that all individuals in the audience space themselves out by at least one seat. So, would you guys be, just to try to maintain some distance? And following along with the appropriate federal and state guidelines. I know it seems small, but sometimes those small things add up.
Thank you.
But up next, we have row officer, or reports and comments. Rich, where Perry, do you have anything for the board?
I do.
Rich, would you approach?
Yes. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Happy St. Patrick's Day as well to everybody. I do want to report, since last Tuesday, when I was here, we marched to the county collections, that Treasury's Office processed and deposited an additional $879,560 and one cent. So, as you know, as the Treasury, I do put out a press release in lieu of the coronavirus and the concerns. And I am happy to say that the taxpayers are paying attention to it, and that the traffic has been very light, the mail has been extremely heavy, which is good, and even the other forms of business that we do, the dog license, just yesterday evening, there was 125 requests for dog license online that we processed this morning. So, I'm very pleased to say that, you know, the residents of Lawrence County, there's other ways to do business. Of course, we want them to be safe, we are open for business, but at the same time, you know, in lieu of what's transpiring, you know? And I do want to thank the taxpayers for teething to that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes.
Also, I'll add to that, just, we are having currently our staff pull together a list of all services the county is able to provide through online, digital, or remote means.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll have that list out within the week to give our residents the greatest flexibility in how they want to adapt their habits to the current pandemic.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome, Rich.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have our public comments section. I would ask that all public comments to Board of Commissioners be related to activities that the Board of Commissioners, activities of departments that Board of Commissioners are responsible for. Any questions that you have that might be related to state or federal services, we ask that you direct to your state or federal representatives. Any questions that might be related to local municipal services, such as police, fire, paving the roads, we ask that you direct those to your respective Board of Supervisors, Borough Councils, or, in the case of Newcastle, City Council or the Mayor. That being said, are there any public comments at this time? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to fiscal and contractual. We have no bids to advertise, we have no receipt of bids or proposals, we have no fiscal reports, we have no report on quotes. We do have the warrant register to approve, and I will give my colleagues a couple of minutes to look that over, and then I'll take a motion to approve the warrant register, or accept the warrant register.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting warrant register, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Next on the docket, we have approval, in minutes and correspondence, we have approval of the Tuesday, March 10, 2020 meeting minutes. I will give my colleagues a second to look those over, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I move for adoption of the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I will second.
All right, hearing a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have presentation of written communications, and at this time, there are no written communications, no proclamations or certificates at this time. Next up, staff reports. Looking into the audience, I don't see anyone here from staff, so I'm just going to assume we have no staff reports. And Commissioner, reports and comments. Commissioner Vogel, you're up first to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One technical item, traditionally, at the conclusion of a meeting, I usually hand my packet to the person from the Newcastle News, and since we have the Elwood City Ledger here today, I'm wondering if Mr. Spielvogel, would you be willing and able to do likewise for?
Sure. Absolutely.
For Mr. O'Shea.
And also note that anybody that wants access to these board documents, they're all available online at this time.
I'm going to also, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withhold further comment at this time and defer to the Chairman. It's been a busy number of days, and I believe he has some updates, and we're also awaiting arrival of our solicitor and our Public Safety Director. And I'll forego any additional comments at this time. Chairman, thank you.
And I will forego comments at this time until the arrival of our solicitor and our Public Safety Director. Like Dan said, we do have some updates relating to Lawrence County's response to the current coronavirus pandemic.
And I will defer as well.
But, in the interim.
Yes.
We do still have business before the board, and the county operations still continue. So, in new business, we have, under the Commissioners' line, under Commissioners' section, we have professional contracts, which is, first off, discussion and possible approval of a renewal agreement with the Eric Ryan Corporation located at 1 Early Street, Elwood City, Pennsylvania, for the period of April 1, 2020, through March 31, 2022. The purpose of this contract is largely, the Eric Ryan Corporation monitors our energy rates, they work to find us the best deals possible. The contract is structured in a way that in, that any savings that the county receives or encourages as a part of this program, I want to say 30% of those savings are then remitted back to the Eric Ryan Corporation. So, it costs no money upfront, only, the only money that it does cost is if the Eric Ryan Corporation does indeed find a savings as related to our energy consumption. But, are there any questions or comments?
Other than, thank you, Mr. Chairman, other than the fact that our working relationship with this company, which is based in Lawrence County, by the way, has been a very positive one, and they have demonstrated their ability to allow us to realize cost savings with respect to some of these services, so I strongly support the renewal as it's been proposed to us.
Loretta, anything?
No comments, no.
Okay. Unless there are any objections, assuming, I'm always horrible, just assuming I have to find the resolution. Carol, what resolution number would that be?
Sixty.
Okay, now we're going up to sixty. The second item in general business today relates to the jail, which is discussion and possible approval of the overtime requirements for caseworkers and county employees pursuant to RSAT, Vivitrol, and MAC grants. As the chairperson of the prison board, Loretta, I think you're in the best position to talk about this.
Yes.
So, I'll give the floor over to you.
Okay. I'll put my microphone on, just in case somebody can't hear me. This is, the three grants that are here, and I have to preface this by saying that we are the only corrections facility in the state of Pennsylvania to actually have submitted and received monies for these grants that will assist those inmates that are either housed already at the Lawrence County Jail, or come into the Lawrence County Jail, and if they are suffering some type of an addiction, or pertaining to an opioid, or if they are actually on a, an opioid-suppressing medication, such as Suboxone, I know that that's, sometimes that's a word that's used for the medication that everybody pretty much understands and knows, that that would be continued for them. The part of the grant, and I want to preface this and say this, that every single bit of the, the monies that are used for the additional, the counselors, the caseworkers, as is indicated in the resolution that we would pass, that any of the county employees, that if they are already working their 40-hour day, this is for an additional monies for overtime, and weekends, and evenings, that they would see fit to be able to work with the inmates that are there. It's a very specific program, each one of them very specific, it involves, you know, sometimes one-on-one counseling, as well as group counseling, and of course, these group counsellings are affected by the coronavirus as well, so they are also in contact with the state, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, to see what those regulations, if things have changed as far as that goes, and what they're recommending, you know? That, I'll segue into another part of, of just the entire correction system, that is a very contained environment, and they're taking the precautions that they need to make sure that all staff working, as well as the inmates that are there, are safe, and they're maintaining the distances that they need to. It's an ongoing process, and it's a day-to-day process, just like, of course, with everything else that we're dealing with. But, back to the caseworkers and the counseling and the services, and actually, the administering of the medication is an entire process that goes on and takes place, so as part of the grant, they do get the overtime for it, there are no monies incurred to the county, and these are grants that are renewable, if not every year, every two years. So, we want to continue to provide the services that we can, and also follow the guidelines of the auditing purposes for the grant. So, this is pretty much what this entails, is that we have the resolution that allows them to be paid the overtime, and then it's, it would be through the Controller's Office, then that all of the overtime hours are tallied, accounted for, and proper payment's being made. I think that covers it. Any questions from my colleagues?
Oh, I have one. You covered it very thoroughly.
Okay. I just wanted to, again, reiterate that, we are the only corrections facility to receive all three of these grants, so I think that that, that is something that we, you know, could be proud of as, as a facility, as a governing agency, that we are trying to do the best that we can for the inmates that are there, and as well as also segueing into the aftercare, working with the different agencies that will help with the aftercare once they are released. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Are there any, any questions from Dan?
No, no, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Loretta.
Sure.
In good shape, sir. Unless there's any objection, we'll make that Resolution 2020-061. I also believe that at this time, we have an additional resolution prepared for the board.
Would, Mr. Chairman, would it be helpful, perhaps, if these two gentlemen, I'll relinquish my seat, so that they can speak into the microphone, and would that be helpful?
You can have mine.
I suppose it would be.
Yeah.
I would assume that we want to read the whole resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, and then I'll be providing a statement afterwards.
Okay.
As these two gentlemen come up onto the podium, first we have our county solicitor, Tom Leslie, and then coming up behind Loretta now, our county Public Safety Director, Jeff Parish.
Jeff, sit there. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, please. Please do. No, I'm fine.
I don't need to be up front. It's okay. If it scratches.
All right, so. All right. The Lawrence County Board of Commissioners is declaring a state of emergency relating to the coronavirus pandemic. With the increased spread of the pandemic to neighboring counties, we feel it is important at this time to provide the board with additional emergency powers to deal with this crisis. Among other measures, this declaration of emergency allows the board to call emergency meetings without notice to work to mitigate or prevent undue harm to life or property. In the event that the board does decide to call an emergency meeting, the board will make all reasonable efforts to ensure the public is aware such meetings are taking place, or in the event that this is not possible, will provide the public with a recap of the meeting. The declaration of emergency also empowers the board to waive the public bidding process for any purchasing relating to the coronavirus pandemic. It is important to stress that at this time, there are no confirmed or suspected cases of COVID-19 in Lawrence County, although that is likely to change in the coming weeks. The Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, the Lawrence County Department of Public Safety, and Lawrence County Court Administration are maintaining open lines of communication to all state and federal partners throughout this disaster. Over the course of the next few days, the board will continue to meet with our department heads, row officers, and court administration to finalize our emergency preparations. The courthouse will remain open to the public and fully operational, however, we ask that all individuals limit their courthouse visits to essential business only. And at this time, I'll read our declaration of disaster emergency for the County of Lawrence, Pennsylvania. Whereas a novel coronavirus known as COVID-19 emerged in Wuhan, China, and began infecting humans in December of 2019, and whereas COVID-19 has spread to multiple countries, including the United States of America, and whereas states throughout the United States have been affected, including the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas the World Health Organization has declared COVID-19 to be a pandemic, and whereas on March 6, 2020, the Governor of Pennsylvania issued a proclamation of disaster emergency, which among other things authorized the suspension of certain procedures and formalities prescribed by law, and urged counties to act as necessary to meet the current exigencies, and whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency, and whereas of March 13, 2020, there are multiple confirmed and/or presumed positive cases of COVID-19 in the United States, including presumed positive cases in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas on March 13, 2020, the Governor of Pennsylvania issued an order closing all K through 12 schools in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for at least 10 business days, and whereas the ongoing impact of COVID-19 has the potential to endanger or threaten the health, safety, and welfare of a substantial number of persons residing in Lawrence County, and threatens to create problems greater in scope than Lawrence County may be able to resolve, and whereas emergency management measures are required to be proactive to reduce the potential severity of this disaster, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the affected residents of Lawrence County, and whereas Section 7501B of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, 35 PACSA, Section 7501, authorizes the county to declare a disaster emergency upon finding the disaster has occurred or is imminent. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lawrence, Pennsylvania, declare that, one, the existence of a disaster emergency in Lawrence County is declared pursuant to provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Code, as amended, due to COVID-19 creating a public health emergency. The Lawrence County Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Coordinator is directed to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to work with state and federal authorities, to take all appropriate actions needed to alleviate the potential effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this emergency. The commit three, the Commissioners hereby create a leadership council to advise the county administrator and the county emergency management coordinator in response to COVID-19 that shall consist of the Board of Commissioners, the county administrator, the county emergency management coordinator, the human resources department head, the solicitor's office, the sheriff's office, Lawrence County Medical Director, and any and all additional members as shall be deemed necessary and appropriate by the Board of Commissioners. This leadership council shall meet as needed in response to COVID-19 without the need to formally advertise times and places of meetings due to the exigent and evolving circumstances of this disaster. Although, as time permits, every effort will be made to list the times and places of such meetings in advance on the county website. Five, the formal requirements of time-consuming procedures and formalities prescribed by law, excepting mandatory constitutional requirements pertaining to the performance of public works, entering into contracts, the incurring of obligations, the employment of temporary workers, the rental of equipment, the purchase of supplies and materials, the levying of taxes, and the appropriation expenditure of public funds are temporarily suspended in light of the exigencies of the situation. This declaration or any related order, proclamation, or statement shall be given prompt in general publicity, and shall be filed promptly with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. This declaration shall take effect immediately upon voting on it. So, that being said, we'll make this Declaration of Disaster Emergency, County Resolution All right. I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to allow for voting on Resolutions 2020-060 to Resolution 2020-062.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Resolution 2020-060, now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, the existing agreement with Eric Ryan Corporation of 1 Early Street, PO Box 473, Elwood City, Pennsylvania, is hereby extended as per the attached document. I'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Mr. Rudler?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes. And Resolution 2020-061, now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, the caseworkers, as well as county employees providing services to inmates of the county jail pursuant to RSAT, Vivitrol, and MAC grants shall be paid one and a half times the regular hourly rate for all hours worked in excess of an eight-hour day, regardless of the hours worked per week and further for the purposes of overtime, holiday, vacation days, personal days, sick days, shall be considered as time worked. I'll take a motion on that resolution.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Take a roll call vote, Carol.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, and County Resolution 2020-062, Declaration of Disaster Emergency for the County of Lawrence, for the purposes of discussion, I'd like to first entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, at this time, is there any discussion relating to the Declaration of Disaster Emergency?
Would you mind, Mr. Chairman, perhaps, providing some background information to the media and the public in terms of what's led up to this? And I assume that this was going to be part of the procedure today, obviously, you're running the meeting, but perhaps allowing the media, whether it be now or after the meeting, but perhaps, I think, so it's entered into the record, I would suggest it be now, I would agree, to perhaps see if, first, if either Mr. Leslie and/or Mr. Parish have comments, and then see if they and us would be willing to accept questions from the media.
Absolutely. First and foremost, I want to take, let's take comments from the Commissioners, then we'll turn it over to Director Parish to provide sort of an overview of the situation as a whole, and then we will take questions from the media. So, Commissioner Spielvogel, do you have any comments at this time?
Just briefly, that we have been working diligently behind the scenes, preparing ourselves for this. We can't think that we are immune to something that has happened or going on across not only our state, the country, but across the globe. So, this just brings to light a lot of the work that we have been doing, and we continue to meet and be updated, as you'll hear from our fellow colleagues here, that we are doing everything that we need to do to protect the citizens of Lawrence County and neighboring counties in our state, and of course, across the United States. Yes.
I'd like to add, and again, I prefer if the Chairman gives some of the specifics as far as what's been done over the last few days, and even prior to that, but I do want to note a couple of things. First of all, we just, certainly all need to remain calm. The worst thing that we can allow ourselves to be driven by is fear and panic. What we need to be driven by is caution and vigilance, and I would hope that everyone in our community would do just that. Secondly, this is a new situation for all of us, and I doubt very highly that when my two new colleagues got sworn in, that they ever envisioned we'd be dealing with something like this, because I certainly didn't. I want to make clear, having worked closely with them, not since just when we were sworn in, but more importantly, just within the last week, they have risen to the occasion in terms of their respective leadership roles. They've both done a tremendous job of focusing on what we need to do in terms of communication, in terms of game plan, in terms of contingency plans. They have not faltered in any manner, and I think they're very proud to work with them on this, and we had tremendous cooperation from the courts, particularly the President Judge, our elected row officers, and our department heads, and again, Mr. Boyd will elaborate on the discussions we've been having with those folks, but to conclude, we will get through this, and hopefully, we'll all be stronger for it. And again, just please all remain calm, and focus on staying healthy, and being vigilant and cautious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, and I think I'm speaking for, you know, both myself and Commissioner Spielvogel, you know, when I say that it's not just the two of us, or, you know, any one person, it's the full suite of the Board of Commissioners, our row officers, our court administration, and everybody working within the courthouse complex. But that being said, I would like to give some basic background information on steps that the county has taken so far. To date, we have met with numerous department heads, our row officers, and court administration to each devise an individual plan in the event that we receive an order from the Governor's Office, from the Department of Health, or the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, which requires that we close this building to nonessential personnel. In those contingency plans, we are identifying those employees In those contingency plans, we are identifying those employees that would be required to remain on-site in order to carry out the mission of the county and the mission of the Court of Common Police. Furthermore, we have instructed our maintenance department to increase the frequency at which this building is cleaned, to provide hand sanitizer stations at the entrances through the courthouse, and we have also provided a maintenance employee to be working full-time up at the Lawrence County Emergency Operations Center to make sure that that facility is maintained to the extent necessary if we have to move some of our operations to there or initiate a full activation of the Emergency Operations Center. In addition, we have restricted county travel to nonessential events and have fully restricted county travel to any of the state-mandated quarantine counties in Pennsylvania. At this time in the western part of the state, that only includes Allegheny. However, we are anticipating that within the coming days and the coming weeks, that will be expanded upon. But that's where we're at right now. We are continuing to meet with court administration, who President Judge Mottow just himself issued a court order relating to the regulation of the courts, relating to keeping jury pools small and working to keep nonessential personnel out of the courthouse. I will say it's important to note that all functions of the courts are operational. Individuals are still able to come before the courts to acquire anything that they might need to acquire, such as PFAs, criminal cases if necessary. We still have the capacity to bring those before the courts. The courts are fully operational, and the justice system in Lawrence County is still fully operational, as is the general operations of the county. But yeah, we will continue to meet with our department heads over the course of the next few days, continue to meet with court administration, continue to talk to our neighboring counties, our counterparts, the boards of commissioners, in Mercer, Beaver, and Butler Counties, as well as remain in contact with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania as we all work to mitigate this current crisis that we face. That being said, I'd like to turn it over to Emergency Services Director Parrish just to provide a brief overview on the situation, you know, current cases that we're seeing around the state, any patterns that we're seeing with those cases, and at the state level, what's being done to respond to the current pandemic. So Director Parrish, forward your question.
Hello, everybody can hear me? You all right? Okay. Thank you. And again, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for putting up with me for the past week or more on past three days, the amount of emails, the amount of correspondence that we've gone through. We're constantly in communications with Pima, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. That's who we answer to. Also, the Department of Health, we have conference calls pretty much every day with them, but also with our region counterparts that we work with every day, especially with Mercer, Butler, Beaver, that all surround us. We've had group texts, we've had group email, group phone calls, just making sure that everybody's walking the same and making sure, checking on each other. We watched it when it first came in. I know a lot of people were upset, or there's a lot of discussion that nothing was being done. There was a lot of work that was being done for the past several weeks in our offices and just discussions. So it wasn't that we were turning a blind eye or just turning our back on it, thinking that it wasn't going to affect us. We don't say, you know, if it's going to affect us, it's when it's going to affect us, and it's going to, it's reality. And just like Commissioner Butler said, you know, we need to be vigilant, you know, we're prepared, we just need to deal with it with a calm, calm sense of being and, you know, just watching what's going on now. I mean, we're getting prepared. This is different. We dealt with H1N1 back in 2009, 2010. We have plans statewide, countywide, regionwide. There's plans to deal with pandemics, there's plans to deal with continuity of government, and I mean, we basically have plans for everything. We refer to them. The biggest thing is a line of communication and keeping open. As today, we were discussing this, I was emailing and emailing the Pima director and letting them know our western area that, you know, what we're doing, just so that everybody knows. I have several different sites that we're constantly referring to and watching and looking at the past day and half of today also. Sitting up with the commissioners, it's always what's new, what's new, something's always popping up. We're seeing all the demands that are, the requests, and actually, I mean, our counterparts out east are getting the worst of it, especially Montgomery County. It's a health emergency, so we're under the direction or we're the partnership with the Department of Health. This is totally different than a physical disaster that we're used to going out to a tornado or a fuel spill or something like that. I have to, I've been saying that every day. Sometimes that's better to deal with. Unfortunately, we don't like to deal with any of that stuff, but you know what you're dealing with. This is sort of the unseen, and we just know basically what to do with that. And we do know what to do with this. Our medical director has been in touch with all of our medical agencies, you know, the EMS agencies that are out there, UPMC, we have a good line of communications. And again, like I said, the communication is key to anything, any emergency day-to-day operations, no matter what, it's the communications. And we do have a good communication line with all of our partners on it. So anytime anybody moves anywhere, we let each other know. Beaver County, of course, everyone's I'm sure aware of, that's the closest case right now that was, was the last night at nine o'clock, nine thirty, they did their press conference that they do at seven o'clock. As of five thirty last night, my last reach out to UPMC, just to see how everything was going up there, their status quo, they're just running as normal as the hospital. And if we do receive any phone calls, I mean, it will come from the state, like they explained last night, Beaver County, Barry Berger, their director, got the call from Pima, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, at seven o'clock last night that they had a confirmed case. So that's what will happen. I don't want it to ring in the middle of the night, but at some point in time, we know we are going to have to deal with it. It's nothing to panic about. It's, you know, again, it's a health emergency, and the Department of Health, and everybody are already on it, they're doing even more than what we are. So the best thing is what the governor's saying also, and, you know, just social distancing and stuff. I mean, your life still has to go on, but just be aware where you're at, you know, clean your hands, wash your hands, you know, just general hygiene and stuff, and try to stay out of large crowds. But, you know, that's really it. As things develop, social media is one of our biggest keys that we put stuff out on. We've noted on resolution, we said we're going to try to put stuff out on the website, and once we form this committee and notify everybody of what we're going to do, we're going to start getting things in line. But we will also be putting stuff out on our Facebook page, Department of Public Safety Facebook page. But also, for any other current information, go to the State Department of Health, PA.gov, go on the Department of Health, go on the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency website. Those are all up to date with what to do and all the procedures that happen, and even more up to date than what we are. We have always ended up sharing stuff. They're constantly having their folks updating as it goes on.
All right. At this time, we'll open for any questions anyone might have.
Could we perhaps allow Mr. Leslie to offer some background and some rationale on why we've adopted this particular declaration, if he's so willing?
Certainly. It's important that we adopt this declaration, and we held off on it until today. The fighting factor for me was when I found out that now in neighboring county, Beaver County, we do have a case. So it's important to have this in place because we need to be able to function if we get into an emergency situation, and this establishes the way we can do that. This gives the authority to this group to make decisions that are necessary to, we can avoid some of the time-consuming requirements that are always necessary. We have an emergency situation, those things are not, that's taken into consideration so we can make those decisions more quickly and more effectively. So it's important, even, it's not saying that there's anything different here today than there was yesterday, we're just saying that we need to be in a situation where something happens, we have everything in place that we can move quickly and get things taken care of without having to come back and go through this process. So that was, that's the reason for doing it now.
All right. I just want to make a comment. You know, as Commissioner Butler said earlier today, Morgan and I ran, and we realized we were going to face some difficulties, but certainly not something like this. To know that on such, such a situation, that meeting this morning, you know, with our sheriff, he's here today, with the sheriff, with our solicitor, Tom Leslie, Jeff Parrish continually being with us all the time, always updating, filtering the messages, getting the information to us, all of us together, everybody working together and being available, to know that that is in place on such a short notice, when we, you know, with Beaver coming, having a confirmed case, and meeting this morning and talking and getting everything together that we had to get together, I just want to note that everyone had been in contact with their colleagues across the different counties and across the state so that we were able to, they were able to come up with the declaration, with everything. Jeff and Tom, we put them together and said, okay, you know, it's time, let's do this, and to come up with everything that they did, covering the things that they did. It reassures me to know that we are in very, very good hands with this type of situation because you don't accomplish goals as quickly as you do without people having done their homework and been prepared. So I thank you, both of you personally, Sheriff definitely, everyone else that's here that's spent the time and put things together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments from, all right, we'll take some questions at this time. Angela.
Given the widespread outbreak in other places, okay, are there any plans to use the St. Francis facility?
Not at this time. Any other questions?
Just, obviously, there are a lot of things that have come from the government's office about nonessential businesses should try to have limits in business and, you know, as far as trying to, you know, obviously, the normal recommendations of such businesses and whatnot. You know, I guess, you know, what can you say to calm the concerns of the people out there right now about what's going on?
I mean, what I could say is, I mean, we're working on it, we're aware, I mean, the Department of Health has it in hand, they're the ones that are taking the lead on it. They're coming up with the test kits to try to expedite that. I know the Vice President had a speech on Saturday, or Sunday night, I'm sorry, that was talking about doing some community-type testing. That has not reached any of our desks yet. I know that was the big thing, of people fearing that they have or they don't, they don't know if they have or they do have it. I know the big keyword that everyone's using is flattening the curve, is what they're saying, and that's with the social distancing and stuff like that, that, you know, not to, you know, have mass groups meeting and stuff, that they're, you know, it's coming. I mean, that's something that we said. There's nothing magical to prevent it from somebody getting it. People are going to get sick, the recovery rate is good. You know, you just look at the numbers that are there, you know, it's something that they're well aware of. You know, with the flattening of the curve, they're just trying to prolong it instead of overwhelming our emergency services and, you know, our fire departments that run medical calls and our ambulance services, you know, they're getting inundated by, you know, calls. Our 911 center, our dispatchers are doing an excellent job. We have new protocols in place, and we've had them in for almost two weeks now, that we've been screening everybody that calls 911, whether they know it or not. We are asking key questions, and we are letting the responders know, you know, that there is a possibility that somebody was out of the country or in an affected state or area. So I mean, we have been doing stuff in the background, and there are, you know, I mean, we've been doing a lot that people don't realize. Everything that's being done at the state, the state and the federal level, it is for everybody's protection, you know, as extreme as it may seem at times, but I mean, it is something that, you know, they're learning from what has happened overseas, you know, they're learning from other areas that this has happened to.
Angela.
With respect to Elwood City, and we have a lot of viewers down there that way, and the Elwood Hospital being closed, are there plans being made to get them up here quicker or if you need me, use the Elwood City Hospital?
To the best of my knowledge, there's no plans at this time to utilize the Elwood City Hospital facility. That being said, the whole county is comprehensively being looked at and analyzed, where if there were cases in Elwood, if there were cases in New Wilmington, or Bessemer, or Harlinsburg, or wherever a case might hit, you know, those plans and preparations are absolutely being made as to the most efficient way to provide those individuals with service. The biggest thing that I can say is, I think there's a degree of personal responsibility here. If you feel like you're getting sick, if you feel like, you know, you have symptoms that relate to what is being reported, the symptoms of the coronavirus, or any other illness for that matter, that you do seek medical attention and you get a doctor's professional opinion. I think that's the biggest thing that we can do. You know, I do not foresee an instance where, I'll go back to, the biggest thing you can do on an individual level is if you're feeling sick, go see the doctor comprehensively. I think that's probably the best advice I can give you as someone who is not a medical professional.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any additional questions at this time? All right, I'll also stress that with relation to how individuals are getting information during this time, I would ask that you make sure your sources are legitimate news sources or government sources. I've seen so many, so much information over the course of the past, you know, week, two weeks relating to the coronavirus that it's been inaccurate or incomplete. And unfortunately, due to the nature of social media and the nature of how connected we are as a society, those inconsistencies, those, you know, incorrect statements have the ability to spread very fast. And so that I would ask, again, you know, when you're looking at information relating to the coronavirus, relating to the COVID-19 outbreak, make sure that it is coming from a legitimate news agency or a government agency here in Lawrence County, at the state level, or at the federal level. I think the biggest thing we can do to ease fear, to ease uncertainty, is to make sure that we're checking our sources and checking where we're getting our information from. I think now that's more important than ever. Is there any other comments from the board? All right, we have to call for a vote on it. We have a motion of the second. Ample discussion. Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielbock?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me, and I appreciate that you did give everybody an opportunity to ask a question. Under normal circumstances, we'd be able to stick around, talk with you. However, the chairman has organized ongoing meetings with department heads and row officers. We've met with the majority of them so far, but we still have a few more with whom we need to meet. And if I'm not mistaken, we're going to start that very shortly. So we're going to have to head upstairs. That being said, and I don't want to overstep my bounds, but we won't be able to stick around, I don't believe, for very long after meeting in case there are any last questions. Again, I don't want to overstep my bounds, but I thought that might be worth noting.
Yeah, I think our next meeting is at 11:00.
I believe you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. All right. Announcements. Our County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania meeting was recently canceled due to the outbreak of COVID-19. Under normal circumstances, the commissioners do not meet during weeks in which we attend those conferences. However, with the cancellation of that event, we will be having a regularly scheduled commissioners' meeting at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, March 24th, which is one week from today, in this room. That being said, are there any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Forgive me again. Is there a prison board meeting tomorrow at noon?
Prison board meeting tomorrow at noon.
A public meeting.
Public meeting, yes. Public meeting, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And actually, I do want to note with relation to the prison, our warden has taken steps to ensure the safety of all prisoners in that facility. And currently, in that prison, in the Lawrence County Correctional Facility, visits are being limited to essential or court-related personnel for the immediate future. I just wanted to note that.
Yes.
So do we have a, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Also moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion of the second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries, Lawrence County Board of Commissioners to adjourn.
Thank you.
Pete, I'm going to give this to Debbie.